Elementary School and Edison Elementary School. Let the record show that all board members, except Dr. Agress, are present for the hearing. The superintendent and the district administration are recommending approval of the plans, specifications for roof replacement at Wilson Middle School, Roosevelt Elementary School, and Edison Elementary School. I would ask Dr. Marillo or her designee to quickly review their recommendation. Following your view, we will receive questions from board members. When board members have completed their questions, we will take questions or comments from anyone who is present. The official board action on the plans and specifications for roof replacement at Wilson Middle School, Roosevelt Elementary School, and Edison Elementary School will be determined at a future meeting when the board is asked to accept or deny the actual bid. Please.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask Stacy to step forward and present the plans.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Is this on? Okay. Tonight, we want to present to you bid number 18-002 on three roof replacements across the district, one being at Wilson, one being at Roosevelt, and one being at Edison Elementary School. And before I start showing you some slides, I want to give you a little history on the roofs. All three of these roofs are ballasted systems, which we would fully remove the system, replace it with a 20-year warranty EPDM system roof. And currently, we're looking at doing this project over two years, two school years, the 17, '18 school year and the '18, '19 school year. We'll look at paying for both of our, all three of these projects out of capital funds, approximately $600,000 this first year and $700,000 the following year. Our first project is at Wilson, and I can get larger plans if anyone's having a hard time reading any of these, we can get some information out to you. But as you can see from this project, we've got about 67,000 square feet across the building, which is a pretty large section. It mainly covers our PE music areas at the facility, as well as our kitchen serveri, and also some classroom space, which is up at the upper left-hand corner of the building. We're looking at doing this, I don't know if you can see the hatched area, the single hatched area is in our base bid, and the double hatched area is an alternate bid, in case our bids come in high. Our second building is at Roosevelt. We're looking at 13,000 square feet, and this is across the three-story building. It's the oldest section of the facility. We've got two sections, Roof A and Roof B, that are in need of replacement. And then finally, at Edison Elementary School, we're looking at doing about 16,000 square feet. Again, this is the oldest section of the building, the main educational size, side of the building. It's the two-story at the south end of this facility. The cost estimates broken down by section of roof, and I'll kind of just go do the highlights on this. In our base bid, we're looking at about $780,000. The alternate two roofs at Wilson are an additional $360,000. So our total across all three projects is about $1140,000. And then we have a 10% contingency in there, in case we run into some unknown issues while we're taking the roofs off. So our total project cost is about $1,254,000. Our project schedule, if all goes well this evening, we'll send it out to bid tomorrow. We'll do some walkthroughs early September, probably around the 7th. We'll look at letting the project on September 14th, and we'll get all of our bid packet information back to Dr. Marillo, so she can get it in the board packet around the 19th, and then bring it back to the board on the 26th. If all goes well, we'll start construction early October. Again, this is going to be weather-dependent, and also, we cannot be interrupting any educational areas at the building. We need to make sure that we're being quiet and not being disruptive. So with that being said, project should be complete September 30th of 2018. Are there any questions?
So the alternate section at Wilson, can you show that again? Just curious.
This whole area is base bid. And then this would be alternate. They're all in need of replacement, but if we have to cut an area, this is one of them that we're looking at. Cutting and cutting.
I have a couple of questions for you. First of all, we have a schedule to replace roofs amongst all our buildings, so is these on schedule?
Yes.
This is not a surprise for us then.
No, we did have a group go out and inspect all of our roofs across the district this last summer, and these are the ones that became very apparent that we're in desperate need of replacement.
And you've got the rest scheduled for the, okay.
Yes. We've got them, we've got them scheduled out probably the next five years, and then there's some that are going to be way further out, because we've replaced them earlier.
Typically, in like at Edison with the new construction, that's supposed to be a 20-year roof, is that?
Right. On Edison, they did not, let me get to that drawing, and Roosevelt, too. I can explain that one. Roosevelt, they did not, like, this section during construction. We added this new section out front, and then replaced these roofs, because they were way older at the time, and I thought that it was a useful life. This project was $30,000, $40,000, $50,000.
Okay.
Edison kind of just didn't really do the project until, well, this is the addition. I think it's always been a new roof, this area, that they're replacing.
But my question is, these new roofs for the new additions, that's 20 years. That's kind of the standard what you hope for. Okay, my second question is, do you supervise this, or do we have an engineer do this?
Well, we have an architect who does all the plans and specifications, and then we work together as far as the supervision on the projects.
So what percentage of this cost is their fee for that?
Uh, we'd have to pull that out of it. I don't have that in front of me. But we do an overall, usually their construction cost is about 6% to 7% for plan specification and contract management for the whole project.
Is that for roofs or for everything?
For any general architectural-type projects.
Okay, thank you.
I've also been seeing certain areas, and different companies and groups are replacing their roofs with solar panels. Did we look at that and find it cost prohibitive, or lack of people to install?
A little bit of everything on that one. Some of it, I'm not getting good information back from some people that we've asked from. We had one group who wanted to come out and just use our roofs to put the solar panels on, and then they would actually, we would get the energy savings, but they also wanted to take the extra energy and sell it back to other companies. They would actually manage the roof project, but we would still have to do a roof project underneath it before they would bring their product in. That's the one person that I actually got some information out of. And there's some interesting stuff out there, and I think we need to do some more investigation on solar energy, definitely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments on this proposal? All right, thank you very much for your attendance during these public hearings, and I will now close the public hearing session. I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting of the Council of Public Schools for August 22nd, 2017. Mr. Wilson, please call the roll.
Mr. Grove.
Present.
Mr. LaFerla.
Present.
Mr. Gazire.
Present.
Ms. Riley.
Present.
Mr. Hanson.
Present.
Mr. Arthur.
Present. Now, please stand and join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we are proud of our schools' introductions. Dr. Marillo.
Yes. Do you want me to go ahead and start? Good evening. Dr. Marillo and I are very pleased tonight to be doing something we've not done before, and that is to recognize two members who dedicated their summer to students in our schools, in our CB Camp Summer Explore. So we are asking you to help us recognize a support staff member and a licensed staff member of CB Camp Summer Explore. First, I would like to invite Kelly Keller, our support staff member of the summer, to join Dr. Marillo up here at the front. Welcome, Kelly. Yeah, I'm going to read about her first here. So I'm pleased to share just a little bit of information about Kelly and what her nominator said about her. Kelly served as the Health Associate at Longfellow Elementary during this year's CB Camp Summer Explore. Mrs. Keller also serves as the Health Associate at Longfellow during the school year. She's in her garb tonight because of back-to-school night, right, Kelly? Her expertise in this area provided the summer Longfellow staff with necessary background, which helped make the program successful. Kelly created a caring community for students, as you might expect. She listened carefully to the needs of each student and provided them with the assistance they required in order to be successful. Mrs. Keller also assisted with several behind-the-scenes tasks. Everybody kind of does, comes together and does a lot. She helped with several organizational pieces, answered the phones and greeted parents, and volunteered to help out however she could throughout the summer months. Mrs. Keller went up above and beyond when she tackled the Longfellow basement. All summer programming materials are stored in the basement at Longfellow, and this has been a challenge the program has waded through each and every year. Kelly sorted through the numerous tubs of materials and created an area that looks brand-new. As a result, there is now additional storage space for the new materials to be organized and ready for next year. The task alone will help everything run more smoothly. Kelly was an asset this summer and deserves to be recognized for her hard work and dedication to the program. Dr. Marillo, excuse me, will present a trophy and a $50 gift card, courtesy of our foundation, to Cracker Barrel. Staff members who got a chance to work with Kelly this summer, please stand and help her, help her celebrate. We're going to pause for a quick picture. Kelsey Van Beek, would you please join us as our licensed staff member of the summer? And bring your friend along. I am pleased to share a little bit of information about our outstanding licensed staff member of the summer. Kelsey Van Beek was nominated, and I will share just a little bit what they said. "I was the supervisor of Camp Summer Explore 2017 at the Henry Dorley Zoo, and had the pleasure of working with Kelsey. She was a teacher for one of our sixth-grade groups. Kelsey worked hard to make every student in her group and students outside of her group feel welcomed. She built supportive relationships with her students in such a short amount of time, as you know, it's only a six-week program. Whenever she, her supervisor needed assistance, she was there and the first one to step up and be available and ready to help. Kelsey was eager to find different opportunities for her students within the zoo to explore, therefore delivering to her students such diverse and engaging curriculum opportunities. The expectations at the zoo were different than those, as you might expect, in the regular classroom, so she worked with her students to make the transition easy. When students were having difficulty, she would work in a collaborative manner to problem-solve and find a solution. It was such an awesome experience," her supervisor said, "to work alongside Kelsey this summer." Dr. Marillo, represent the trophy and the gift card again, courtesy of our community education foundation. Enjoy, and anyone who worked with Kelsey this summer, please stand and help her be And after the photo, this completes that we're proud of our schools.
All right. Congratulations, Kelly and Kelsey. Thank you for all you do. We'll go ahead and do the approval of our agenda. Is there a motion?
I move approval of our agenda as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Agenda passes. Now I need approval of our minutes for the regular meeting of July 25th, 2017. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of the minutes for the meeting of July 25th, 2017.
Thank you, Chris. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion, I guess, on the minutes? Any questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and the minutes are approved. Now we come to the public participation portion of our meeting. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on issues that we will talk on today, or any issues you have. If anyone would like to come speak, please step up to the mic. Nobody willing, okay. All right, we'll get right to the superintendent's report. Dr. Marillo, take it away.
At this time, I'd like to call Dr. Borkman to the podium to present our student achievement report. We'll be presenting to the board a summer school report. I attended the zoo closing. The closing session of the zoo, and the six weeks that they had, wow, it was powerful. If you would have seen all the parents that were there with their students, with the projects, and the way that they loved the teachers, when the teachers, they were honoring the teachers, the kids were just going mad, and it was just, and I looked at Dr. Borkman, I said, "Book it now for next year, book it now." So anyway, I'm pleased for him to present. We had a really great summer school. I visited all the sites, and I'm very pleased with the work, and very proud of the work that you did, Dr. Borkman and your team. Kids love it. Kids, 70-something kids had perfect attendance, and some of them in both sessions. It was amazing.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share a recap with you of Camp Summer Explore 2017. It's hard to believe that just 10 days ago, we wrapped up another Camp Summer Explore, where we welcomed over 1,000 students this summer to engage in summer learning throughout the school, the end of the school year to almost the beginning of our new school year. So I'm going to turn it over to some very special people. I would like to introduce to you tonight our Assistant Program Director, Carly Gates, Dr. Sandy Day, Director of the 21st Century Learning Centers Grant, and then our co-site supervisors, site supervisors for extended school year, Gina Durfee, Lori Durand, Tracy Frush, and our Director of Special Education, this is Becky Zorn. And they're going to give you a little update on some of the things that you may have got to see had you stepped into one of our classrooms at Camp Summer Explore.
Good evening. Thank you for having us again. As Dr. Borkman said, I'm Carly Gates, and I just want to start by saying thank you to Diane and the team for being able to recognize two of our employees. They worked so hard over the summer, so it was really nice to have that opportunity to say thank you to them as well. So as you remember, we were here in October, and we mentioned that with our partnership with 21st Century, we were going to be able to extend summer programming. So like Dr. Borkman said, we just wrapped up about a week and a half ago. August 11th was our last day. So we are currently in the process of having our team work with Iowa Reading Research Center, Dr. Reed and her team, in order to analyze the data and put together a report that's really going to allow us to kind of look at next steps for summer programming in the future. So we'll be excited to present that to you, we're hoping at the late October board presentation. So tonight, we just want to celebrate some of the highlights that happened at each level of our programming. So to start off with elementary.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us back. So we talked also earlier this summer about some of the state recognition we're getting from the state of Iowa's 21st Century Community Learning Center State Consultant. His name is Vic Jaras. One of the things he asked from all sites, and there's 93 sites across the state, was to give him a written summary of what we were planning, and it was a big, long summary. And so he followed up with a phone call and said, "You know what? I think we need to have some media surround this from the state level." So on about 1st of June, he contacted us and said that Deborah Darge, the communications specialist from the Department of Education, wanted to interview us and come out and take pictures for an article, and she did that in mid-July, I want to say mid-July. And, well, it was really a good, a good article. And you probably have actually seen this article. I know it was embedded in your, in your board packet, but I don't know if you had a chance to look at it yet. Oh, by the way, that little girl, JoJo, Kelly Keller's daughter, and a doll, I got it, she's so involved in clubs during the school year. And so when we walked into this classroom, of course, I knew her, because I'd been working with her, and so I asked her, "JoJo, what are you doing?" And she said, "I'm learning to perfect my blending sounds." And she showed me this game that she was playing, and it was just amazing. Anyway, so if you haven't had a chance to look at this article, kind of revisit it, if you will, because it is remarkable. What I like about it is, the first, when I first read the headline, I got chills, because the point of this article is, if every community across the state did what we did, and actually tried to reimagine what it could be, we'd be in a whole different place as a state. So it's a, it's a great article. We get a lot of great press, not just the elementary program, but we got fantastic press at the middle school program, in that article, and also the high school program. So we're very excited about that, and, oops, I went too far. You're next. Oh, oh, I lied. I'm going to hand this to our president in a moment. We received a letter back from Deborah Darge towards, well, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, whatever, and she tells us thank you, but she says, "On a personal note, it was a tremendous privilege and a pleasure to meet with you and Carly, and learn about the exceptional summer programming and classroom visits to photograph students and staff. It's my sincere hope that other districts will be inspired to follow your, the, follow your footsteps." So.
Yes, definitely. So we were excited about that, and then also, at the middle level, we had a visit from Channel 3 News. They wanted to showcase us in their summer learning videos that they post during the summer. So we had then come in, and are just going to show you that clip here, and their focus, you're right, their focus was really about the summer learning loss and curbing that.
For a lot of kids, it's also the time they disengage from learning. Only mid-July, and this in the classroom report, Shante Passmore explores one way to keep the brain active all summer long.
We want students to see that learning is everywhere.
Like the zoo.
So we know that there is research that supports that there is a summer learning loss, and that's really what we're trying to get rid of.
During the summer months, the Henry Dorley Zoo is a hotspot for families, but it also doubles as a place to learn.
So we are going to be planting seeds today.
That's what these Council Bluffs middle schoolers are doing today.
One, two, three.
At the summer camp called Explore. Think of the zoo as a base camp. Some days, they're checking out exhibits or learning about plants. Later in the day, the kids could leave the zoo for another field trip.
I spoke to someone from the district, and they say, "Summer school, as we know it, has fallen by the wayside. It's all about summer camps and keeping kids engaged, so when school starts again, they'll be ready to learn."
Ready to learn science, math, and English. Just ask the kids, getting up at the crack of dawn for day camp is not a bad way to spend the summer.
It's mostly the zoo.
Yeah, the zoo is a lot of fun.
It's fun to be at the zoo.
We get to go explore. I've never been to hot shops, which we get to do, and we get to go to, like, Lurts and Gardens, which was pretty neat.
Factor in the fun. The Council Bluffs Community School District and its partners are fighting the summer phenomenon known as brain drain, with one hand raised and an active mind at a time. For in the classroom, Shante Passmore, 3 News Now.
You can find this story and more.
That's why I said, "Book it now."
So that was definitely exciting. I mean, we, we've hosted this at the zoo for, I think, about seven years now, so it's harder to get, to get better than that, but each year, our goal with this middle-level program is really just to enhance it more and more each time. So as we told you last time we presented, we were able to offer two, three-week sessions this time, which was awesome, and we had 77 students who attended all 15 days of the program. So that was also very exciting. It was a great summer for them there. And then lastly, at the high school, one of our huge celebrations there was the fact that we had 11 graduates who earned their diploma, which was very exciting, because these are definitely those kids who can fall through the cracks, and they really don't believe that they can do it. And they come in during that month of June, and they have support, and people pulling them in and saying, "Yes, you can." And then they had an entire graduation ceremony on June 30th to celebrate their achievement. We also had a student who was supposed to graduate in 2014, who came back. His plan was to go into the military, and he was going to be turning 21, and decided that this is what he wanted to do, and he did it, and he graduated this year. So that was also very exciting.
And then finally, for high school, I wanted to share two clips. I know we talked about a model that we started last year at Iowa Western Community College, where we were creating career institutes, where students would spend an entire week on the campus, in that case, of Iowa Western. We were able to expand that to a second week, a week at UNO, and then a week at Iowa Western. And in the morning, students would study a subject area, say, science or technology. They would eat lunch then on campus, and then they would go and visit a business and learn about that, that business firsthand, and actually see, see science in action, and see relationships between people in a workplace, and understand that as much technical is involved in a workplace, it's also about the people. And so we expanded upon that. I have two clips here. I don't know if this was shared with you, and I apologize if not. The first Wednesday of August, we had, we hosted a statewide conference for 21st Century here in Council Bluffs. We had 44 21st Century out-of-school people from across the state come and spend the day with us. We wrapped the day up with, well, it was going to be four high schoolers, three were able to join us and to talk a little bit about what that experience meant to them. Please bear with me, this is only two one-minute clips.
Showed me new careers that either I wouldn't, I didn't know, like, one was a goat and cheese milking place, that I wouldn't even have known existed, and others, like Conagra Foods and stuff, I wouldn't have thought, I wouldn't have taken a second thought to go to, but now that I've gone through it and I've seen the certain things, I feel that, like, some of the stuff, like the KMTV, I would love to be either on the radio or on the news. It's, it's given you, it gives people new opportunities to see different things, and it's a good way to spend your summer.
And like when Brendan said that, I just about cried, because, I mean, honestly.
My week, I thought it was just going to be, like, studying plants and cells, like, all areas of biology. However, our professor that was... However, our professor that was in that career institute, she came in, she handed us 20 folders of, like, cases of people that died and people that were alive. And she was like, here, solve this. So we were all like, what? I spent four hours trying to look at all these cases, trying to come up with, okay, the people that died, how did they die? Like, what was in the food? And it ended up being a spoon that was like, they put it in the mashed potatoes and then the beans. So it was just cross-contamination. So then the second week, she told us the importance of what an epidemiologist does, and how they, like, solve cases with the CDC. So the second week, we learned about bacteria replication and DNA synthesis. So then Wednesday, that third day, we grew bacteria. It was E. coli, and I was the only one out of seven to successfully grow the bacteria.
And then pretty much the whole room admonished him to make sure he used that newfound power very well. But I'd just like to, as we wrap up this part about high school, I just want to point out that these young people addressed a room of 40 people, the majority of them, they didn't know. So not only were they able to communicate what that experience meant to them, they, I got all their autographs, because they were great public speakers, they really did us proud. I want you to know that these students filled out a survey at the end of these sessions. They want to do these not only again in the summer, they want to continue these during the school year. The students that asked for that are on our advisory team, and they're working side-by-side with our teachers, who are going to help develop those things. So that was the essence of that amazing thing with high school.
Hello. We ran the extended school year programs.
Speak right in there.
Right. We ran the extended school year programs. Our elementary was hosted at RUU this year, and our middle school, high school program was hosted at TJ. It's a three-week program that we have with our students, and multi-disciplinary staff that works together. And we basically just work on maintaining student achievement with our IEP goals, and helping them make progress and succeed. The thing we wanted to mention from this year was that our community collaboration this year was absolutely outstanding. We worked with Hy-Vee and some other local area businesses to work on purchasing things, and they gave us sale ads, so we could make price comparisons as we did our shopping and planning for cooking activities that some of our teachers did with their activities. We also had lots of local restaurants for ordering and paying for meals, and money handling, life experiences, things like that with our groups. The local businesses that hosted some of our outings and mobility were wonderful to work with our students, and our bus drivers were outstanding. We had some really, really hot days, they had water on the buses for the kids, they were very, very caring, and very, very patient with our students. So we just really wanted to make sure we highlighted them.
I want to do a personal shout-out to the Thomas Jefferson custodial staff. I can't even tell you, I cannot begin to tell you how amazing they were, number one. We came in and asked for a ton of stuff, like, to turn around really quickly. And like, first of all, they did it without complaining. Then it was the second day before we were going to, before the last day of school, and I hear over the loudspeaker, we're going to be testing the fire alarms. We had two autism classes, and a couple of ELP classes with some really sensitive kids, and it was really hot that day. So it wasn't like we could just go outside with them. The new head custodian, Joe, I went to him with three, I had, like, three backup plans for how this was going to look, because sometimes, when you ask for things, you don't get them. And I'm really a big advocate for kids. So I go, hey, Joe, I know we've asked for a lot, and you're going to do fire testing, and, you know, is there, he's like, oh, we can do it tomorrow. I'm like, oh, okay, well, let's do that. And, you know, so it was really exciting to have somebody understanding the kids' needs and taking those into account.
So believe it or not, we are already planning for next year. And our intention is to use the data that we get back from our program evaluation that Dr. Reed and her team will be conducting to make the program better. To find out what has worked this summer, we did some different interventions in terms of reading at the elementary level, to try to determine if it was produced better results than what we are currently doing. And we will use those data to determine whether or not we should make some changes in our regular school year program. And summer school provides a perfect opportunity for us to do that in a controlled setting. And then several of us will be attending the National Summer Learning Conference to try to understand what nationally are the trends in summer learning, and what other great school districts are doing to engage their communities in summer learning as well. So we are really grateful for the continued funding from the Iowa West Foundation that helps us provide this great opportunity for our students during the school year. We're proud to partner with 21st Century Learning Centers, as well as our Special Education Department, to make sure that kids are engaged during the summer learning year. So if you have any questions, any one of these people would be more than welcome to answer them.
Those high school students, are they earning credit for the career institutes? Or is that separate from the credit recovery?
Yes, that is a great question, and because of the work of Dr. Vorthman's team in teaching and learning, and also thanks to the students last year for asking for that, if the students attended the full week of Iowa Western and the full week of UNO, they were able to earn one elective credit. If they did one or the other, it was a half. The students who did the 15 days in June in the afternoons, and/or the 15 days in July for just the summer trade, career and trade explorations, they were able to earn a full credit for that month. So yes. And this team got it organized, wrote the course numbers, like, at the drop of a hat. We had certified teachers teaching these things that were not university people, and so we had a real, real tight touch on whether or not students were really learning things. And we feel really good about that. Thanks for asking that question.
Very impressive programs. I just would hope that the community members would realize how special these summer program offerings are.
The article on, is it Jose Suria? How did that come about? I just, was it just tied to that, and somebody decided to make that? That's awesome.
It was a surprise.
Okay, if everybody hasn't seen that, it's on the website. It's an amazing article, just a great way to publicize what we do, and just thank you all for what you do. I don't know how many, how many people are involved total in our summer explore.
Oh, my gosh, it's a lot. Yeah, the, our Human Resources Department did a fantastic job of ramping up all the way through the summer, and making sure that we had adequate staffing, all the way from teachers to professionals, to youth development workers, to secretaries. Really, it's, we run the buildings almost completely year-round, and like Gina said, our custodians deserve an extra pat on the back for, especially those buildings that were housed summer learning, to turn around and make sure those buildings are ready to go back to school in such a short timeline. Stacy and her team, and Brian deserve an extra kudos for really going above and beyond to make sure those buildings had extra support, so that the buildings are beautiful when students walk back in their classrooms on Thursday.
How many students total are served? Did you say that already, or?
We're over 1,000 this year. Between ESY and middle school, going two sessions, elementary and high school, and the career academies, I would say, we're well over 1,000.
How many were in the Special Ed Extended Learning thing?
About 160.
Really?
160.
Does the attendance hold up for those three weeks?
We have the best attendance we've ever had this year.
Good, good for you. That's great.
Lots of phone calls.
Well, we have, what, 1,000 kids in Special Ed?
More than that.
More than that? But anyway, I'd say 150 for the summer is pretty good. My other question has to do with the reading.
Sure.
First of all, I want to commend you all for having this Dr. Reed, is it Deborah Reed, providing accountability on what we're doing. I mean, that is huge, in my opinion. And we all know that reading is so critical. And I look forward to her report, because I think, aren't we getting closer to figuring out that every kid can read if we just find the strategy for him or her? Are we there yet? Are we?
Well, we certainly believe that we, there are no easy answers.
I understand that.
Every kid is certainly different. But we do believe that there are some core practices that we believe that if implemented with fidelity in all classrooms, can make a tremendous difference in the lives of children, especially in early readers. And I think what Dr. Reed brings to the table is helping us use a critical eye about the practices that we're currently doing from an objective point of view, and look at which of those work best with most students. And that's what we really hope to learn from her this summer. Not only did we use a pre-assessment to, that is independently verified, separate from the Iowa assessment, to group kids and identify where kids might struggle the most. We also had teachers tape-record their conversations with students, which will be analyzed for fidelity of the approach that they were using, to identify if we have breakdowns in the system, where we may think that something is happening, but it may not ultimately be happening. And that could be, it could be because of skill, it could be because of will, or it could be because of both. And we want to be able to identify those areas, and then provide the supports that those teachers need, so they can meet the needs of kids.
Well, I think that's just great, because that's a sea change from when I was working in education. A lot of teachers would not allow themselves to be that open and accountable. And I commend our staff for doing that, and the leadership that you people have obviously provide. It's really exciting. It's good.
Thank you.
How did the staff, I guess, oh, sorry, go ahead. Just curious about the tape recording. How'd they, was that a difficult conversation, or did they embrace that?
I think the nice thing about it, it wasn't a surprise, because we did it last year. So, because we were part of the pilot program across the state of Iowa. So when we asked them to do it again this year, for many of our staff members, it was, well, yeah, we did this, we did this last year. And it's not very intrusive, and I think it helps, it provides us data to help us get better. We do not have our heads in the sand, thinking that, number one, we have all the answers, and number two, we're doing it exactly right. We can learn every day how to get better for kids.
Well, Dr. Vorthman, you kind of answered my question. My question was, how do we, and what tools were we using, and instruments that will be used to judge the effect, the efficacy of the summer explore program? So you answered those, pretty much, you answered the question as I asked.
Just to make sure that we put icing on the cake, we're doing a comparative sample. So we will be looking at all kids who qualified for summer school, so any kid that did not meet the threshold to be at grade level, in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. And then all of the kids who actually attended, qualified and attended. And then we are testing, post-testing, all of those kids in the first two weeks of school with a very quick screener.
Right.
That our coaches will administer. So we'll be able to compare two light groups of kids, one who received the six weeks, or seven weeks of intervention, and one group who didn't. And I'm going to be real disappointed if we don't see, if we don't see growth in that intervention group.
And that was part of my question as well, is, were our students going to be the control?
Yes, we are the control and the experiment.
And will other kids in the state who participated in the program be put into the compiled data for the whole state, or it's just going to be our stuff?
This is just for us to learn and grow ourselves.
What worked at that?
What worked in Council Bluffs, for Council Bluffs kids, with Council Bluffs teachers.
Very good. Any other questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you all. That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Okay, and now we move on to the informational presentation, with Dr. Morales starting us off.
That is a very positive. I can remember when I went out and I asked for where the summer school sites were, but I didn't tell them where I was going. I could see the eyes light up when I walked in the first school. And I can, I came back to talk to Dr. Vorthman and said, they didn't know I was coming, because you know how everybody's on their best behavior when you know you have visitors coming. And I can tell you, I found teaching in every classroom, and every interventionist had small groups, and they were working on specific targeted responses. And so that was, by the time I got to the third school, though, I could tell the word was out. So they knew I was roaming, so I called it a day after the third one. But I can tell you, it was, it was really, really nice to see that, and to see that focus. Because it is sometimes about the additional support, the extended year, and sometimes it's about targeted interventions. And I feel like they're strategically looking for, what are those interventions that work? And that's what we should do, personalize the learning. So very, very happy with, and I told him, I said, I'm super excited about the work that we had this. And I also made it into TJ on Taco Tuesday, when our students were cooking, and the young man that come over and invited me to come have tacos with him, he saw me at AL and stopped and said, hey, you came to my Taco Tuesday. He said, my grandma's still a substitute teacher. And I said, that's great, I'll be looking to meet your grandma this fall. So it is, students were so excited. And all four, that whole section that I went down in TJ, it was wonderful to see the kids all engaged. So when she talks about the learning taking place, and students were engaged, even though one section was in, in cooking, I saw a science section going on in another room, and then math. And so they were working with our special needs students, and really providing quality education for them also. It wasn't just that they were there for the summer, we were only meeting IEP goals. Students were engaged and excited to be there. So I found that really exciting. So thank you for allowing me to present an update on the 100-day plan, the 100, the one kind of disappears in that column, doesn't it? We began our listening and learning tour, and in working with Diane when we got here, to really see how I could really begin to work with stakeholders, our community, and listen and learn and hear from them, versus coming in and just trying to start school and start an initiative, but really to seek to understand the work that's going on here, and then how I could then prioritize the work to continue, especially around student achievement, graduation rates, and ensuring that our community is happy, pleased with our school system, that they see it as high-quality. And so in that, we've completed three sessions. We've had over 100 participants. Two of our sessions were community-focused. One was at Abraham Lincoln High School, and the other one was at Thomas Jefferson High School. Four of our board members here attended. A couple attended both sessions, and really happy about that, and participated. What that looked like on that evening was, I know that the people coming in from the community were thinking they were coming to hear from me, and hear me tell them what we were going to do. So we quickly told them that this was a listening and learning session, and I'm here to hear from you. And so we set up a tabletop activity, for those of you that did not attend. And what we did in that tabletop activity was, we really wanted them to have time, you know, sometimes when you get in community meetings, you can have a few strong voices that really talk a lot. So what we tried to do was to make sure that all voices could be heard at every table. So our tabletop activity allowed them, everybody came in, and they got a copy of our strategic plan, they got a copy of what our focus was, that you heard Dr. Bruckner present to you in June. And then they had a chart paper, and they had markers. And we asked them to draw a line down the middle of the chart paper, and tell us what they believed were the strengths of Council Bluffs Community School District, and what they thought were areas we could enhance, or opportunities that we could take in this transition. And so we gave them about 15 minutes or so to begin to discuss and talk with each other, and begin to list out what they believed were those two areas. Once we kind of completed that section of time, then we allowed the tables to stand up and report out. They reported out what they thought were our strengths, and the areas that we thought we could enhance, or opportunities that they saw for us moving forward. Then we placed our chart paper around the room, and everyone got three dots. And your three dots could be placed on other tables, chart paper, or just your own, and you placed your dot by what you thought should be a priority for this year moving forward. And so we got some really good feedback from that. And I felt like, everyone felt like they left herd. And then the other thing, and we Then we placed our chart paper around the room and everyone got three dots. And your three dots could be placed on other tables' chart paper or just your own. And you placed your dot by what you thought should be a priority for this year moving forward. And so we got some really good feedback from that. And, uh, I felt like, everyone felt like they left herd. And then the other thing, we wanted to make sure that we told them was, when we published the 100-day plan, that we would publish what were kind of the big rocks that came out of this activity and what we heard from the community. So also a part of the listening and learning tour has been to, for me to form working relationships with the community. I've met with local partners, community leaders, media representatives, administrators, and new staff. I am continuing to meet with building principals. Uh, once we got closed, because our elementary principals come back later and, uh, we had to have our professional development and then we had our administrators conference in Des Moines, we, I, I kind of decided that I was ready to let the principals focus on getting their buildings open. And then I would go out and meet with them each individually and spend some time. Plus I think it'll be more exciting to walk the building with them with students present. I mean, it was great to see the secondary schools, but it was empty classrooms every time I went in one, so I'm looking forward to that. So I still have that left to do. Um, and, um, and continuing, the building principals also, I asked them kind of three critical questions that I want them to answer for me. And one is looking at their data, what their focus is for this year, what they plan to do differently than what they've done before. So it's some areas that I'm asking them to look at and have a honest conversation with me. It's not a gotcha conversation. And, you know, they know I've seen the data and I know they've seen the data in their school improvement plans. So then also in the part of the listening and learning tour, in the first 100 days, it's very important for me to connect with colleagues. So I have met with Iowa superintendents. I've also attended the UEN meeting. Um, I have met with the Metro Omaha area superintendents at the MoAC. And then I've attended Community Education Foundation and then the Council Bluffs Noon Rotary Club. And I plan to join, um, that, um, that group. So the next steps that I still have left, um, I still need to meet with the, the staff. And what I'm going to do is host two more meetings. And I feel like, even though some of our staff members may not live in Council Bluffs, they are invested here. And they believe in our kids and they believe in our schools. So I want to have the same tabletop activity with staff members to see how their views and perception of what's working and going really well and what are areas of opportunity compared to what our community members and our key community, key communicator, the breakfast that we had with our business partners. And, and so I'm going to meet and hold a meeting out at Abraham Lincoln for our staff and then also down at TJ. And then have the feeder schools then come into those meetings and we're gonna run through the same exercise and allow them then to prioritize. And then that way, I've kind of got a collective feel, what inside the district they feel is really good, what's outside they feel is really good and what are some areas and opportunities for us. From there, I will continue to make school visits and then we will produce a 100-day plan for you. And this will be a plan for the board and the community. We are telling community members that have given us their email address that we're gonna email them a copy of, of the plan once that's finished. But of course, I'll give it to the board for review before we get there. So that kind of gives you kind of a snapshot of what I've done for the first, how many days am I in? Maybe, uh, some, some of my team was asking, is the 100-day up yet? And I said, not yet, but we're getting close. They are ready. Uh, so, um, that is kind of some work that we've been doing among getting ready for schools and, uh, the work, uh, the teams were working really hard. And I can tell you, your cabinet that you had here that supported Dr. Bruckner has really supported, um, supported me in my transition. And I couldn't be more pleased with the support that they've given me. And I, I want to thank them publicly for all the work that you do. So I'll open it up for any questions.
So when we interviewed you, we didn't lie to you?
No, you did not. You did not. Well, great. So you know tomorrow is our, um, back-to-school celebration, so we'd love to invite you if you can make it by. Uh, we have a great, uh, celebration planned. Mr. Arthur will be greeting as, as a representative of the board for our, our teachers and staff that's returning. And, um, also, um, I know that on the first day of school, if any of you would like to visit schools, we'd love to have you there visiting schools with us. We'd welcome you anytime in the buildings. Okay? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, I think, Mr. Wilson, you're next. Okay.
It starts at eight thirty tomorrow?
Um, yes, eight thirty?
Yeah, for the actual reading.
Yes, and your programs are at your table. I knew there was something else I was supposed to say. So thank you.
Yeah, but the, um, the one part starts at seven o'clock, the fair. The fair full of teachers. Is that what it's called? Fair?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about the reports, uh, the Treasurers report for the 1617 year. Board members were provided in their packets, um, the depository balances as prescribed by state law. This, this was the balance per the bank at the end of June 30th. And then obviously, we need to reconcile that bank account with our books so the, so the balance, so the balances that we have in the books are gonna be different than what's on the bank. Uh, the, also, the numbers are gonna be, that are going to be presented tonight are before audit and subject to change if expenditures or revenues, um, related to June 30th are received between now and the audit fieldwork. I actually handed out to you tonight a, um, little spreadsheet that shows, looks like this. This is, it has revenues and expenditures as I reported to you in your board packet. Those numbers actually changed a little bit, um, as we reconciled accounts and more, and more revenue or expenditures were received, uh, since Friday. So in some cases, uh, the surplus or surplus went up and in some cases, the deficit went down. So, um, you'll have that, you have that there in front of you. One of the things that I, I don't necessarily like doing this report in August because the books are not closed. And I do not like getting up here and telling you, hey, here's where we're at right now and then, you know, we, we could have a change. And I don't expect anything to materially change, but I like to be a bit more precise in what I'm telling the board. So, um, we have to have this meeting before the organizational meeting and since there's no early September board meeting this year, this is the time we have to do it. The, um, numbers I have up on the screen are as of, um, this morning. And right now, as you see in the budget, uh, we had budgeted a loss of about 1.6 million. And we actually have a surplus of about 525,000 before audit. And I got a very nice note from Mr. Grove the other day saying I was a magician and no, I'm not a magician. And it was just some things that happened during the year that, uh, quite easily could have gone the other way, um, in another year. What I'm going to do here in a moment though is I, I wanted to reconcile, here's what we budgeted, here's what came in and why is there a difference? So we have about a $2 million difference between what we budgeted and what actually came in. One thing to keep in mind is that a 1% difference in our budget is about 1.14 million dollars. So, um, to be awful precise is sometimes a bit more difficult. And as Dr. Marillo and I were talking about this yesterday, you know, she said that school finance is a very fluid, uh, process and she's exactly right. Uh, things can happen. We could get funding cuts in the middle of the year. We actually did have some funding cuts in the middle of the year. You could have some expenditures we have to spend money on that we weren't anticipating. You could have expenditures, which was happened in our case, that we didn't spend money on that we had kind of planned to because there were different alternatives that we went through. So bear with me as I, as I go, go through this here. So for the revenue side, um, the difference between budgeted revenue and actual revenue, we had about a million two more. Now, one thing I, I do want to point out here, um, is I handed, I, I sent you your board packet, let me go back up to this screen, the budgeted, on the budget column. If you look at that closely, you will see that I lowered total revenue and total expenditures by 1.2 million dollars each. Why did I do that? About August or September of last year, we get money for our special education program for our kids who go to Heartland and Children's Square, from other districts who send their kids to those programs. These, the Department of Education said, don't run that through your general budget. Run it through an agency account because it's basically money in, money out. So our revenues and expenditures when we did the budget was overvalued by a million two. What I did is I took, I took 1.2 out of revenue and 1.2 out of expenses and that's the budget numbers that we're gonna be looking at tonight. So the reason that our, it just happens to be another 1.2 million dollar number, it doesn't have any relation to what I just talked, talked about, but the difference between budget and actual of the one, two was, we had a one-time funding of 575,000 dollars for special education from Heartland Family Services. Let me explain what happened. Last summer, I was meeting with the CFO at Heartland Family Services and she says to me, so how do you want to handle that payback, that money payback that we owe you? And I said, what are you talking about? Well, we owe you some money. Well, how much do you owe us? About 575,000 dollars. And I about fell out of my chair and I said, how do you owe us that money? Well, back in 2005 or something, we started this program, you would pay us money and then if you owed us money at year end or we owed you money at year end, we were supposed to true it up. But your prior people never trued it up. So it just kept building, which was a shock to me because we didn't have it on our books and we should have had it on our books because if we overpaid something, we should have showed it as a receivable on our books. We didn't even know that was out there. Thankfully, they were very honest and they helped and they, and they, um, we set up a payment program where they paid us back that money last year. When I prepared the budget, that was not in there. So there's 575,000, a million two, uh, difference. We had about 250,000 dollars more in Title I funds than we anticipated. We had about 200,000 dollars more in collected property taxes than we had estimated. And those are always kind of a guess because you don't know, um, how well the county's gonna be collecting, uh, money on your behalf. Uh, sometimes it's better in one year and sometimes it's worse. And then there were about 185,000 dollars of other changes, this plus this, minuses, plus this, minuses, that the difference was about another 185. So that's the difference, the major differences in the revenue between the budget and the actual that came, it came about. The budgeted expenditures, um, were off about 908,000 dollars. And 433,000 of it, I highlighted the, the benefits line. So we budgeted 20,700, it came in to be, to be about just shy of 20,300. Why? Well, when I was doing my analysis over the past few years, budgeted, um, excuse me, actual benefits were roughly about 31 and a half percent of total salaries. Sometimes a little bit more, sometimes a little bit less every year. So in order to kind of get a general budget, and I'm doing it differently this year, but when I was doing this, we just took 31 and a half percent. Well, the number actually came out to be 31.08. So that difference between 31.08 and 31.5, that 4200, 40, 42 tenths of a, of a difference came up to 433 grand. That's how precise those numbers are when you're talking large numbers. We also had 670,000 dollars in reductions between, uh, in sped costs between Heartland Family Services and Children's Square. That accounted for about 400,000 dollars of it. And Vodick, there was a program that, uh, was eliminated and that was about another 285 grand. So, so those two differences and those two line items, uh, are the reason why we had less expense than we had anticipated for the year. And as you, as I've said before, when we budget revenue and we budget expenditures, I try to understate the revenue and overstate the expenditures to be more cautious on how we're bud- budgeting. Kind of a comical side note, if you add up all of this budgeted salaries and compare it to the actual salaries, it's only off 1,800 bucks. And it's nothing that I did, it was luck. And the reason it's luck is because if you see those line items that says teacher subs or overtime, that's a guesstimate. I have no idea how many, how much subs we're gonna have. The year before, we had a little, we had about a million one in subs. This year, we had 982,000 dollars in subs. So, excuse me, is that subs, I can't read that line. Oh, extra work, overtime. We had extra work of a million one and this year was only 982. So you can see how a 200,000 dollar shift can just happen very quickly that way. The general fund cash balance between '16 and '17 went down about a million one. That's because that was that money that the general fund lent to the stadium fund. That's most of the difference right there. We will be made whole, uh, by October 1 with that money. The special education deficit is currently estimated about 900 grand, down from about 2.6 million dollars last year. And the reason was is because we did get more money because of waitings from the state. And we don't know how much we're gonna get until November. So we won't know for this year until November of how much we're gonna get for this year. So you're just kind of guesstimating as to how much, how much it's gonna be. But the good news is, at this point in time, it looks to be around 900 grand. Uh, I won't know that final number until around September 15th, which I'll report back up to the board.
Dean?
Yes?
Was that, so is there things we were doing with sped reporting? Is that a mystical box where money comes out from special education dollars?
So remember I said earlier that we were down 685,000 dollars in expenditures? That's part of it right there.
Okay.
So if you had that back in, we're up to about a million five. And then we did get extra money because of waitings. I think, Bill, you asked a question earlier tonight, how many special ed students do we have? Just shy, just shy of about 1,900. And that number's going up all the time. So because of those waitings and because of reduced costs, the deficit went down. So the estimated spending authority is, is estimated to increase slightly from about 9.26 to 9.48. We had expected it to be 7.5 because of the loss.
Right.
Uh, the target that we want to have for spending authorities is between eight and 10. So we're in a good place again right now. Solvency ratio went up slightly, 8.58 to 8.72. We projected 7.21 and that's between five and 10, 10%. The good thing about the surplus for this year, and I'm actually looking, thinking we may have actually a surplus in the current year they're in right now, is that that's just buying us time, folks. Because in 1819, we are scared to death as to what's gonna happen with funding. Um, I talked to someone the other day who has some knowledge about the state and they said, if I was you, I would do a contingent, I would have a, a couple of contingency plans, count for a, maybe a 0% increase and then count for a reduction in funding as well. So I've done a projection out for 1819 that says, if we got zero funding and our enrollment did not go up, how much would it be? And we projected costs out and we're probably looking at a loss of, you know, a million eight. So the surplus that we have this year, excuse me, the year end at 63017, and a surplus that we may have in the current year will be more than offset by a loss in 1819. So I think it's prudent that we essentially use that as a contingency and not spend the money, um, as we probably don't need to spend it at this time because of that reason. This is the spending authority trend. Um, I modified it for the expected slight increase in the spending authority for this 1617 year. And this is the solvency ratio trend, the same thing. Again, you see that the spending authority ratio trend is still down, okay? And if we have losses in the 1819 year, it'll shrink further unless we can make reductions and submit a balanced budget to, to you. This is the general fund cash balance for, from 2008 to 2017. Um, you can see the last two years, we've had a reduction in our cash reserve balances. Uh, we need that, we need that kept up because during the summer months, we don't get any state funding. Uh, they give us state funding from September through, uh, June and then July and August, we don't get anything. And so we're missing about 12 million dollars. Our cash reserves shrink. If we didn't have those cash reserves, we would probably have to borrow money in order to meet payroll and do other things. So having a healthy cash, cash reserve is a good idea. This is, uh, just a graph that shows the general fund revenues and expenditures from '08 to '17 as well. The blue line is receipts. You can see that there's just a slight tick. So if you think about it, our surplus this year was one-half of 1%. That's a pretty darned small margin to, to deal with. The management fund, so we all have, we have all these different funds that we deal with. The general fund is for educational purposes. All instructional costs are paid out of there, support for the instructional costs. The management fund is used to pay property and liability insurance, worker compensation premiums, and then the early retirement costs. We had, and then the revenue from there is from property taxes. We had a deficit of this year of about 52,000 dollars only related to early retirement and our cash is a healthy 2.5 million dollars in those funds. Um, we anticipated the loss for this year because of the early retirement program, knowing we had the cash to back it up. So this is not a surprise. The silo fund or the penny fund, uh, the state sales tax collection is where we get our, uh, revenue from. We get about 8.67 million dollars a year. Uh, the expenditures are transfers to the debt service fund. There was about 7.3 million dollars in the last year for bond and principal payments. And then we can also pay some construction equipment costs. If you recall, when we asked for the PEPAL vote, one of the strategies we had was to preserve spending authority. And this is another reason why we probably had a slight surp- preserve spending authority, and this is another reason why we probably had a slight surplus this year, is to move money out of the general fund and move it over to where we can legitimately pay for these expenses, either out of the silo fund or the penny fund. Chromebooks for the one-to-one initiative were paid out of this fund last year and they're anticipated to be paid out of there next year. We had a surplus of $731,000. We collected more sales tax revenue than we had expenditures going out and our cash is about $4.4 million. PEPAL fund, property tax revenue and sales tax, we get about $3.6 million roughly in property tax revenue a year. The LED lighting projects, that you may remember, the rebates are going back into this fund to pay for the costs of those. We had a deficit of $554,000, so our cash shrunk from about $2.4 million down to about $1.9. And that $554 was the unanticipated Wilson and Kern project that we went ahead with. We need to keep an eye on this fund a little bit sharper, because our cash is going down. And it is my goal that whatever we get in for the year, we want to spend. I don't necessarily want to save money here, because there's a lot of need out there. But we use this for a lot of repairs and maintenance in the district. Stacy mentioned tonight about the roofing projects, that will be paid out of here. We've put together a budget for the next two, two and a half years. And we're going to be somewhat vigilant as to what we're going to allow for expenditures throughout the next two, two years, to make sure that we're not spending any more than we have to. The stadium fund, this is, what happens is that we created a new fund when we started the stadium project, because we transferred money out of the PEPAL and silo funds into here, just to track the stadium all in and of itself. Expenditures, obviously, all the related remodeling. We had a deficit of $1,003,000. Cash was a negative $1.69 million, which was borrowed from the general fund, which will get paid back before October 1. So the project is underfunded by about $900,000, meaning that the projected expenditures are going to exceed pledges and other gifts by about 900 grand. So the only way to pay for this is if we can secure additional donations from the community, or we will have to probably use some of the cash reserves in the capital projects fund, the penny fund, to pay, pay for this. I put a budget line item in there for $1 million for this already. I don't want to use it, but we do have the cash there. So the district had originally decided to put in $5 million and maybe closer to $6 million before this is all said and done. The debt service fund is the fund where all the bond payments are made and interest payments and then some related fees. We had a slight deficit of $256,000. The reason you have a deficit is because we're moving money into cash accounts for future bond, bond payments, and that shows in governmental accounting, it shows as an expense. In real accounting, it's not. So the sinking fund, because Bill asked this question the last two, two years, what were the sinking funds? So these are funds that we've got set up that future bond payments could get made out of. So we've got about $5 million in cash just sitting in a bank account for future bond payments to be paid out. So that's money that we can't use. This is just kind of a summary of the management, PEPAL, capital projects and debt service funds all together. You'll see the big spike in 2015, '16. That was when we had the bond refinance and we took about $3 million out of there for the stadium project. There were some accounting stuff that made that number balloon, because we had to pay off all these bonds, and then we got the bonds back. So it's kind of an in and an out. But, long story short, is we don't have that most years. So we kind of broke even between all those funds. If you add up all those four funds, we about broke even on all of those together. The nutrition fund, this is the, the fund set up to feed our students. We had a slight deficit, right now, 15 grand. Now, the Gatsby 68 entry, what is that? That is the entry, if you remember, when Brian Green was here from Simon Johnson. We've got to put on our books, our portion of the IPRs shortfall. Depending on how earnings came about or did not come about, that number will, will shift that deficit one way or the other. And I'm waiting for payroll to close out August, because we're still paying out teacher contracts for '16, '17, that until I get the final numbers, I don't know what that Gatsby 68 entry is going to be at this time. But it probably will be, I'm not going to guess one, one way or the other, but it will affect that number. We had a healthy cash balance of about $2 million. I think that loss is actually the first loss since I've been here in about four and a half years. Yeah. So that's good. Virginia did a fantastic job monitoring her books and I, I think that Lisa will continue to monitor the books well, well again. I mentioned IPRs a little bit ago, I think I mentioned to the board, or it was done in a Friday note, that IPRs came in and did an audit and it's, they're claiming that the employer's portion of IPRs may go up 1%, another 1%, which is about $750,000 more expense for us next year. We won't know the final number until November. I don't know about the employee portion at this time, but the person who was here said, "Just plan on probably having an, an increase." This is the nutrition fund, you can see the blue line is the revenues. I think if you go back to the '29, '10 year, that was the last year we had a loss. So we're basically break even this year, I think that's, I think that's pretty darn, darn good. The last fund is the health fund, this is the health insurance fund, this is where all of our health insurance premiums go into. Premiums are paid by the district and employees, and then there's reinsurance payments. So the first $150,000 of a claim, we're on the hook for, anything over $150,000, reinsurance kicks in and we get a check for anything on that overage to basically mitigate the district's exposure. The expenditures are health claims, reinsurance premiums, whatever. We had a surplus in the fund of $1,000,001. We had better claims experience than, than expected. So a year ago, when we met about the premiums for the '16, '17 year, Toby and I were in the meeting and they said, "Well, we're recommending that you guys should raise your premiums 2% based on coverage." And we said, "You know what? We've got a good reserve right now, we're not going to do that." And we still went up $1,000,001. So we're not going to have premium increases this next, next year. Dr. Merle and I were talking about that and she says, "What's, what's the experience? Tell me about this health, health insurance fund." And I can tell you that our premium increases the last four years or so have been around 2% or less. Last year it was zero, this year it's going to be zero. And there's not a lot of health insurance plans that can go out there and say that. We do have a reserve of about $6.2 million, that's more than healthy, and we're looking at some alternatives, what, what we can do to return, not return, but to invest that money back into the health fund for our staff to see what, to, to maybe lower premiums at some, some point. There's a lot of pros and cons of doing a number of things, so there's no plan right now, but we've been, we started talking about it. And we have close to $7 million in cash in that fund right now. Other information, minor stuff, auditors will be here September 18 through the 29th. And I'm proud to report that the district is three weeks ahead of schedule and preparing for a certified annual report that's due September 15. My first year here, when you submit information to the certified annual report, it runs through a data scrubber, as they call it, and there's four phases. And we ran the phases, for the first two, we had 1,700 errors my first year. Right now, we have about 35. So, we try to keep up on that during the year and make sure that the books that we present, you, that we present the board with, hopefully are accurate and you can make decisions based on the data that we give you. And with that, I'll, I'm open for questions.
I have a question regarding the health insurance?
Yes.
I remember we were discussing changing the preventative screening tests to not take into account any previous diagnoses, you know, basically colonoscopy, whether or not there was something found in the previous one would still be covered 100%. Was that to take effect for this upcoming year, or would that have been in with that surplus that we had?
The, if we had instituted that, that was probably about a $50,000 increase in cost to the, to the plan, as I recall. I know, Toby, does that sound right? Approximately, based on the estimate, so no, it'll be in this next year.
I, well, I have a question on, on the purchase services, the 300 to 500 series?
Yes.
Okay, so in the packet?
Let me go, let me go back here for everybody, so they can see this.
Because you had changed some numbers and...
I did.
I told you, if I was going to pat you on the back. Yeah, see, that one. Now, is that the one that you changed, you took out? Because the board packet has a $19 million, which looks much better than the budget.
Right, that was the one I said, I took out a million, too.
Right.
Right.
It came out of that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and then the property, the 700?
The 700 series, what is that? So this would be assets that are purchased, so anything, equipment, vehicles. I, I know one thing that's in there is that Title I had some extra money this year for a carryover and we paid for some Chromebooks out of there.
That's right.
So we had, so instead of putting that over in the PEPAL fund, we have to use Title I money, which comes out of the general fund. So a chunk of that money right there was for some Chromebooks.
Which is why that one's overstated.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
How long do people have to pay off their pledge for the stadium? I assume you took that into consideration when you figured the 900,000 we might have to make up?
Yeah, so we have about $17.1 million in pledges total from everybody, and we have about $18 million estimated for costs. And we've probably received about $14.7 or $8 million of pledges to date. There's some larger ones that are out there. For instance, one of the pledges says that we will give you 500 grand when the project is complete. So we can't access the funds there. There's other ones that ask for some information as we go, we go along in phases, they'll pay this much in this phase. There's other ones that say we'll give you so much a year. And we just have to wait, we have to wait, wait, well, no. We'll, we know how, how long we have to wait for it.
Okay.
But, there's, there's one of them that I know that goes out till like 2020.
Okay. Because I, I thought it was kind of a four-year pledge deal or five years?
It's up to the donor.
Ah.
Some, some are three, some are four, some are five. Most are three to four.
Are people fulfilling their pledge?
Yes, yeah, we had a pledge. So the Community Education Foundation is handling most of our pledges. We had one large, well, it wasn't large, it was about a $25,000 compared to the other ones. It's about a $25,000. We hadn't received any money and the Community Ed Foundation called them and worked out a plan and we're getting the money now, so. But, we had some, we had some donations from staff. Obviously, some staff have left. Chances are, we're probably not going to collect that money. So I did build in about $25,000 uncollectible amount, if you will, on those types of pledges. I built no uncollectibles on the large pledges and so far, everybody's met their commitments.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Great. Second question. I read in the paper a couple of weeks ago that the state is going to decrease the workers' comp premium. Have you had notification of that yet?
Have not. We did get...
Down 25%, they said.
We did get a slight decrease in our worker comp premiums for this year, based on our mod rates. But, but we, but we did have a small cut this, this, this year. I've not, I was not aware of that, though.
There was an article in the paper about it, and I thought, that's huge.
No, mostly rates are, are determined by the experience rate. And we've had a very good experience, so...
But apparently, the state of Iowa rate was down big time, so they figured they could decrease it 25%, regardless of experience, the way I read the article.
Yeah, I'll have to look that up.
That'd be good. And I think I asked this the last time, because I'd gone to a couple of our school board meetings in Des Moines, and there's some talk about the sinking fund dollars for the bond issues that we have to pay off. Then the legislature's going to change that, you don't have to hold that in reserve. You heard anything about that?
No, that's kind of interesting, though, because it's the bondholders who are putting up the risk.
Yeah.
So, so the problem that I would see, if I was a bondholder, I would say, "Now, wait a second. If you put no money in the sinking fund, if you guys don't pay, how am I going to get my, my money?" So what I'm going to guess is, if they do that, we're going to see higher interest rates, because bondholders are going to want a higher return for their risk.
So we better approve this one tonight, then.
Assuming that'd be part of the bond issue, that that would be established, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what will give us the, then writing to get the...
And in the bond issue that you're looking at tonight, there is no reserves on this, because Piper, Piper Jeffrey, who's our bond counsel, they do a wonderful job and they kind of nuanced a way around this, is we don't need the reserves.
And lastly, thanks for all your good work on this, this was a great explanation tonight.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dean, I want to say, Bill had said, "Less expenses and more revenues every year" was a good thing. So, we'll expect continuations.
I'm on the hook now, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay. Now we move to the resolution portion of the meeting. First up is a continuation of a bond, surety bond for Secretary Treasurer. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approves the continued appointment of Dean Wilson as Board Secretary/Treasurer and hereby authorize the continued surety bond for Mr. Wilson's position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? I guess I had a question on it, just more about normally doing this at the first meeting. Does this then change for each year we need to at this time for the bond?
No, what happened was, is that when Karen, before Karen left, she put to, put together a list of, "These are the things you need to talk about at certain meetings." And this one happened to fall into August, so that's why we're talking about it today. We could easily do it in September, but it, we just need to do it once a year.
Dean, please call the roll.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes. And the motion is carried. Now we have approval of our final list of 2017 graduates, is there a motion?
I move to approve the final list of graduates for Abraham Lincoln and Thomas Jefferson High Schools as presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, but yay, and thanks to, congratulations, all the graduate graduates this year.
Thanks, I agree.
And that included the 11 that graduated this summer, right?
In that list, yeah.
Yep.
Great.
Way to go.
Okay, Dean?
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes. And the approval of our graduates passes. So now we have approval of revision of job description for system-wide maintenance and bilingual community liaison. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approves the revision to the job descriptions as presented.
Thank you, Chris, second? Anyone?
Second.
Any discussion? And, Dean?
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes. The motion is carried. Now we have a request for approval of new job descriptions for the door monitor at high schools and Assistant Program Director of the 21st Century Grant, is there a motion?
I move to approve the two new job descriptions as presented.
Sir, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dave, any discussion on this?
I just question this door monitor thing, is this a new position?
And why are we looking at it now?
When I got here, I, in meeting with principals, when I came in June and spent two days here in the principals' meeting at their retreat, on the second day, Dr. Buckner just let me have time with them in the principals' meeting. At that time, they kind of reported out on a scorecard that they created. And one area that they rated low at Thomas Jefferson was the disconnect of the two buildings. And in our main high school, they...
Did you have a microphone on?
Oh, yeah, I do.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the, in the two high schools, you have a lot of teachers that help you at the time that the bell rings and the hall monitoring and being able to really see the building. But what Mr. Barnett told me that was out in the athletic building that you have, it's, there's less staff members, and he was very concerned about different community members that could come in off the street and wander in while classes are taking place and no one's watching the hallways. And so what we began to talk about, and he began to share his concerns, and you know that safety is, is a priority for me, to ensure that we are safe. So I spoke with Mr. Wilson, and we began to talk about what it would cost. And he had, one time, Dr. Buckner had looked at pairing the two buildings and putting a walkway there so we could secure it. We know that's a ways off. So I do need to put some eyes on that door to ensure, it's been reported that they had one time found someone in the restroom that was sleeping. And I need a way to ensure that our children are safe during the day and that who should be in the building is in the building. And so this is only a temporary position until we can secure the entryway between the two buildings. And then, and, and the school staff knows that. The administrative staff knows. But this door monitor is to give us another set of eyes on who comes in and out of the door and that they monitor that our children and our staff are safe in that annex building.
So it's just for TJ?
Just for TJ, yes.
I noticed that a lot of the job description was around mathematical skills, language skills, reasoning ability. And I found that interesting, and very little around security or other, just curious.
So those are some of the basic things we expect of all of our employees because we also, as we create from our students, those kind of things, we expect those of our employees and that they set that standard so we can all communicate effectively. So you'll notice that those things are in almost every one of our job descriptions because we want that consistency among all classes of employees for our interactions with the, the professional interactions with our public and with the students.
And I think another place, and why Toby may have written this job description to kind of really mirror other staff members here, is I did not want this to be seen as a security.
Okay.
I did not want parents or anyone to feel unsafe because it is a good, safe school. I just want to make sure that we are proactive and that we hear the needs that the principal presents and that I support him because he wants to make sure his building is safe and he wants to make sure that there is somebody watching the doors as students enter and exit. So that's kind of the reason that we kind of put that in place.
I just wanted to mention, too, this is not a new issue. And it's not the first time we've had this conversation. What Dr. Murillo has done for us is, she's acted on it. We've had this suggestion around the table for at least the past three years that I've been here, after we started to put the keypads and the video surveillance on all the elementary schools and the middle schools. They have all been secured. The last kind of step for us in the security area was, what are we going to do about our high schools? And Abraham Lincoln had done some things last year to secure the vestibule, the entry to the school, and we needed to do something with TJ. So this was, like Dr. Murillo said, our best interim step as we start looking at how we can make sure that there is not unintruded access to that building.
Right. And, and in the process, before I switch over real quick to what I'm kind of working on with AL, Dean is going to have to, Mr. Wilson's going to have to work with the city still because you know that had the train track, and at one time, they were going to do something kind of with that grassy area. And so he still has to make sure that we can have access to block that off as we build that kind of walkway between the two buildings. The other thing that this walkway does is, on the days that it's raining, snowing, and that, between the two, the children have to go outside to get to their PE and their gym and choir back to music, yeah.
So is this person going to be stationed inside the TJ until such time as?
Yes.
Something is built?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Which may not be until late spring.
Right, so we're looking to find this, hire somebody right before, as soon as we can?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, and if you approve the positions, we will post them tomorrow so we can have. So if anybody out there's listening, is looking, please look to our website for that.
Right. Okay.
Great. And then I'm also looking to replace the two gates that AL put up to make them a little more modern-looking and part of the school aesthetics versus just two gates, so they look a little nicer.
Any other discussion on the job descriptions? Okay, Dean, go ahead.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the new job descriptions are approved. Now we have approval of Policy 512.1, Instructional Discipline Matrix. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the new version of the Administrative Regulation 512.1, Instructional Discipline Matrix as presented.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? I guess I had a question on this. So is this something we've been wanting to do for a long time? Is this something that's come about since you've been here? I'm just curious on the.
Looks like it was just kind of tweaked a little, a little bit.
Exactly.
Things were moved around.
Working with Strategic Plan 6.2, which is developing a system of interventions for behaviors and mental health, we looked at our Instructional Discipline Matrix, which the Board approved, I think it was in 2014. And so we wanted to create, a lot of work went into that, and it was good. But we wanted to make sure that our Instructional Discipline Matrix matched what we were doing as far as providing intervention and those different tiers of intervention. So we wanted to make it consistent. So it's, this is just one piece of the package.
Okay. So it's more about we're just making sure that it's accurately described? Okay.
I saw it as more samples, more, yeah.
More, and, and then more, you know, we have behavior consultants, we have student family advocates, we have more resources to help teachers to know where they go if they see that chronic behavior or severe behavior. So we wanted to just match what we're, what, what our process is.
Okay. Any more questions, discussion? All right, Dean, go ahead.
Hold the way down, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the motion to approve the policy has passed. Now we have a resolution to refinance 2010A and 2012 series bonds. Is there a motion?
I'll move. Move to approve the resolution directing the refinancing of the school infrastructure, sales, service, and use tax refunding bonds, Series 2010A and 2012 as presented.
Thank you, Bill. Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion on this?
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
So the refinances on the 2010A bonds, which it looks like the percentage we're at is 3% to 4%?
It's four this year.
It's four this year. Okay, and then the 2012?
Mm-hmm.
Bond, there it is. We're at 2% on that one, aren't we? Is that one going up, or are we refinancing the back half of that?
So the reason that the, the reason our bond counsel recommended to refinance that was because of, A, future increases in the interest rate, but B, there's some reserves in there that we can tap right now. And when they ran the numbers, we actually got, we were actually a bit, a little bit better benefit by refinancing both issuances than just the 2010A.
Okay. So even though the rate goes up, we get more back?
Yes.
Only on the one?
Okay.
Yep.
On, on one, yeah. The first one, yeah, just on the 2012. So you put them together and we come out ahead.
We come out ahead.
Okay. Because that was my concern.
Good concern. The, the other thing, too, about this bond refinance, we're going to use $800,000 of, of, on the savings to pay for that walkway at TJ. So we don't have to use any of the money in capital projects or anything. So I thought that was a good way to free up some cash and put it to a good use.
For the discussion or questions?
Another example of how fluid a school finance is, huh?
That's right. New buzzword.
All right, Dean, go ahead.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the resolution is carried. Now we have approval of HGM Associates Consulting Agreement. Is there a motion?
I move to approve that HGM and Associates Consulting Agreement and direct Board, and I direct the Board President to sign the agreement as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Chris, is there a discussion, questions on this? I don't have a question, but.
Well, I'm just curious what the percentage rate is compared to other projects they've done.
That's a good question, Bill. That's a good question, Bill. In fact, I heard that question sometime earlier today, too, by somebody else.
I had that question earlier.
So I called HGM, and they said that what they did was, when they quoted the $73,000 fee, that was for the high-end project. They wanted to show the maximum amount. And I said, I can appreciate that, but what's the range? So they said 30,000 to 73,000. So I went back to Stacy, and I said, hmm, that's about 10%. Why is that, why are we higher? And she said, there's, the, the fee is higher due to master planning and design. There's a lot more meetings and design during this phase, and we asked them to investigate three different cost options. We don't have that with roofing. It's very straight and simple. So she said, because of all that, it added a few percentage points to their fees.
And I guess I would tell the Board that I asked for to have more than just one plan because I thought the first plan that Dr. Buckner had looked at was very high. And so I said, can we find a high, medium, and low and begin to look at that?
Okay. I have some notes.
Go ahead.
I wrote them down so I wouldn't forget them. This is probably one of the hardest decisions I've had to, to think about on this during my time on the Board. Well, right after I got here, but my thought is, I should be voting no. Last year, we disrupted everyone's lives. We changed all the busing schedules. We saved $400,000. And this is going to cost the same amount. So we did some changing and tried to save some money there. I feel like I should be voting no. Two weeks ago, it was two weeks ago, we sat down with the members of the community through the listening and learning. I went to both of those and listened to everyone. Our community bragged about the top-notch facilities we have in the stadium, and, and the buildings are, are doing very well, and they're remodeled. But we do have a couple of middle schools that also need to be worked on. And I'm not sure, you know, why, why, well, I wasn't sure. When I wrote my notes, I wasn't sure why we were doing this project. Every plan that we had from the city leaders so far for the West Broadway, you know, the trail that we were going to have or putting a parking lot in. Every plan from the city leaders for West Broadway revitalization strip of the land has, is the greatest difference-maker to attract new businesses and citizens to our town, and I want to be intricate partners with the city. And, and I know it's a railway, and I know we're slicing down the middle of it to connect the two buildings. I understand that's very important and for the safety for the children. But I just think that would tie the city's hands in, in doing some of the work for the West Broadway product, project. And, and I would really like to see more relevant revitalization in our neighborhood. You know, they've been planning on doing some things. Some of the plans say they're going to put a bus line down there. I don't know if we're ready to do this just yet. I just, I have concerns about that. I have concerns for, if there's a better way to spend the money. If we're refinancing it a hundred, a million, three? One million, three? I think we can do something better with the money. I have a couple of kids that went to TJ. My husband went to TJ, and I know it is an inconvenience, and I was not aware of the security issues. I think the door monitor is a good thing. But I, I just, I can't approve of this at this time. I think there's better ways to spend our money. So that's how I feel.
I have some information that, that would address some of your concerns. First of all, on the city, I've been told by two city officials that that project is probably gone. That they've decided, they decided that they're not going to do it. So it's nothing that we, we decided. Second of all, we've had vagrants walking in that building and in the bathrooms and walking around, around the halls. It is a safety issue. It's a huge safety issue. Third of all, those savings that you're talking about, those are general fund savings. All of this stuff comes out of either the Capital Projects Fund or the PEPAL Fund. And the money that we're securing, the money that we would get from the bond refinance would go, is some of the reserves that we have just sitting there that we can use for this project.
Right.
Fourth, regarding the middle schools, there's a bond that's going to be paid off next year that will free up money that we could probably look at it roughly a 15 to 20 million dollar bond issuance for the middle schools.
Okay.
So we have a lot of plant, plans in place. But as Dr. Murillo pointed out, I think this is a big safety issue.
And see, I was not aware of the safety issue, and that's why, you know, the, when you explain the door monitor and that there's people wandering in, I understand that.
So this connector.
And that's fine, but, you know, it, doesn't necessarily need to be, if we've got refinance bonds coming up next year and we're going to redo the middle schools, I know that there's a difference between the general fund and the, and the PEPAL and that, you know, we've got capital projects and things like that. But, you know, I'm just, if it's been an issue and it's been a security issue and we're just doing something about it now, would it behoove us to wait a year to figure out what we're going to do with the rest of the middle schools? And that would be my, my question.
And, and I, I totally understand that, and there's some really great points. I do want you to know that Dean and Stacy and I have already met on the middle schools also. And she brought in the plans that Dr. Buckner had worked with the architects to have drawn up. So the middle schools are on my radar, and we are going, like Dean said, we are going to address them. They are major plans, so we may have to look at phases of those so that we don't disrupt the school. Because what Stacy's telling me, there is no place to move that school while we do the renovations. So we're working through that as well. And I, and I do want to go on the record that TJ is not an unsafe place for families to send their children. What I want to do is be preventative and on the front end so that I'm not saying, yes, I heard about that, but I'm sorry, this person was in the building and scared your daughter, or, or something of that sort. I want to be on the front end and, and really making sure that we ensure all parents that their students are safe at all times.
Right, and I have kids that go to TJ, and I, you know, and that's, I understand that, and I appreciate that, so.
So how do we, I guess, how will this corridor, I'm guessing it is, be secured differently, and why can't the TJ be secured now?
Well, what, Dean can tell you the, the plans better than I can, but it was a way that we would connect, almost connect the two buildings, which would not allow currently the, the access and the kids walking outside. I mean, if we, with the door monitor, I can lock the building down. But we did not have a person that could take care of the doorway and make sure that the kids could have access in and out. Because, you know, some would think you just lock down the doors once the class starts. But you know you have children that arrive late. You have children that have to leave for an emergency. And so there's so much mobility that goes between the two buildings. I need eyes on the door.
I mean, will a door monitor solve that problem for us? Because like, I think the idea of connecting these is great, but I also think there's a lot of other land there that could be connected with other, maybe something else could go in the middle there. We could have, I mean, that, that's a huge space of land beside there that we're not using. That's the Yezman area and, and a parking lane right now that's not used. And we have the old, I mean, like, whatever we do here, I think we need to make sure that it could be expanded on later if we needed something else. And we have the old, I mean, like a, like whatever we do here, I think we need to make sure that it could be expanded on later if we needed something else. I mean, it just, like, uh, like to connect these two just for safety and hire somebody for safety. And maybe we could have just somebody hired for safety kind of makes sense to me. I, I don't.
Well, the other issue to me is if I'm correct, all their other buildings have an office secretary or something that buzzes people in the buildings. We will not have that capability in that walkway.
Well, we don't have, I don't, it's, it's not now.
Yes, you will.
Whoa, who's going to be working down there?
Yes, you will. What the, what the plan is, is that, so fir- first of all, let me, let me address Troy's question. What we can do with that, we can talk to the architect and say, hey, keep in mind when you do this design that there may be a point where we want to expand the building footprint there so that we could do oth- other things. So we could probably take that into account. The thought is on that walkway is that in the middle of the walkway, they have the SRO there. Student, Student Resource Officer, and he or she would be stationed right there, seeing the kids come in and out. Second of all, that same entrance would be used for tickets and such like that when they have athletic events. So we could monitor that, that as well. Right now, as Dr. Marilla pointed out, there's a lot of mobility moving back and forth. Now, we looked at, should we put a card reader there? That was one option. What happens if a kid forgets his card, which is going to happen probably a lot? What happens if, um, a kid is late, late for class? You know, there was just a whole lot of negatives to putting a card system in there. And we felt that the way, the best way to secure the building was to put a corridor between tho- those two. Hadn't thought about the expansion of the building footprint, but we can definitely have the architects look at that.
Does the front entrance lock during the day? At TJ, you can't get in there.
No, but the back.
Even there, there's nobody to buzz you in there, right?
But the, but the, but the back entrance you can. And that's just unsecure and it, and it, um.
You go by the office.
Pardon?
You go by the smaller office or the, the main office. Is that the main office?
It's the attendance office.
Attendance office.
Todd, Todd has stated that his biggest issues have been that back door.
Sure, I understand that. But my point is there's no, the way the buildings are configured, even if you put a connecting hallway in there, your idea of the SRO there may work. I hadn't thought of that. But the way those buildings are configured, there's nobody that can buzz you in and look out and see you. At AL, you've got a.
Well, the S, the SRO will, will be able to in that particular design.
But I think, I think what Todd had worked with, Mr. Barnett had worked with Stacy on, is once you come in the back door of building or creating that barrier like they have at AL, to push everyone into the attendance office. And so that is the step to protect the main building. And it's still making sure we find a way to protect. And, and, you know, it, it is kind of, um, concerning that we don't have a way to figure out. And it is something I've got to dig into, you know, of not having a way to secure the doors and have something that either we push to allow people in or, in this day and age, we have to secure our buildings. We just have to. And so, um, we are going to push kids coming in from either their CTE or the classes that they attended AL and back and forth inside by the admissions. Are my greater concern too, and the question I had, and until I watch this, I don't know. I'm hearing, but I don't know. I've got to see it. But the other issue is, is our children have to go outside to the other building when it's snowing, when it's raining, when it's cold. There, that, that is not the best thing either. And I know you guys have probably have allowed, you know, have had this condition for a long time and it hasn't been, you know, it's just something we've always had. But does it make it right to continue it if we could find a way to improve the conditions for our students?
There was, one of the questions was about, um, designing that corridor so that it could be built on later. But we just remodeled TJ not too long ago. Like, what's the likelihood that we're really going to want to put up a new building or build on to that? You know, after, as opposed to addressing a short-term, immediate safety and security concern by putting a corridor in? You know, I mean, I, I, I see planning for the future, but that future might be a ten or twenty years from now.
I guess the main question, I, I guess when I saw this thing, it was the cost of the bid. I was like, that's pretty pricey to get three choices. And obviously I'm assuming that's somewhere around ten percent of each or whatever. And I had heard from someone who had saw this, who said, you know, why don't we have our, they were, they're like, why don't we engage our architecture kids or something like that? Kind of a design contest to design what this looked like. I thought that was interesting. But I think it's weird to have them go through the cost, sign this three different options to look at. At the additional, however many thousand dollars. And maybe that part of it would not be as costly anyway. But I guess, since it's in my mind, since we're, we haven't locked the doors. I mean, we have the locked doors right now, or not locked doors right now, but we're going to put a monitor in there. Can that person run the doors and lock doors, things like that for us? Would this be an issue if we had that person there? Knowing that also that the band rooms, choir rooms, things open their back doors all the time. And leave those open while their kids walk down the, over to the fields. And that becomes an open issue. So I mean, I guess in my mind, it was not just a simple question. I understand, I think that if their principal says, hey, we need to connect these because of, we have problems with security. We have some people coming in, you know, and if it's a, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars to do that, maybe that seems, maybe the, you know, if it's, does the community look at that and go, that's a half a million dollar quarter between those two and has that a good use for our tax dollars? I don't know, but I'm sure they would like to save kids.
Well, we've already approved, we're going to hire a monitor. I assume that person will watch both doors, the one at the athletic center and the one at the.
They'll be in the TJ.
Or just the main building?
No, they'll only be out in the annex.
Yeah, they'll be in the, they'll be in the TJ, the athletics complex.
Because we're, Stacy's going to build like a counter that can double for, um, the, that can double for ticket-taking.
I understand that, but I'm talking right now, when school starts Thursday, you're going to have an open door for the athletic building and you're going to have an open door for the annex. And that monitor's going to watch both those doors? So we're leaving the athletic building vulnerable?
No, they'll be in the athletic building.
Pardon?
TJ is.
The TJ is athletic building. So they'll be in that building, in the athletic building.
Oh.
Main office will be secured the way it's been secured.
Yeah.
But where's that, when you go in there and go past the attendance center?
Right.
That, who's watching that door?
Uh, most times nobody. Is that correct? I mean, you can walk in there.
You're, I mean, there, there could be no one there, but you have the attendance office there and you also have administrators in that area as well. So it's, it's, it's a bit, it's a bit more monitored rather than the TJ. TJ's not monitored at all.
When you say TJ, you're talking about the athletic building.
Yes.
Thomas Jefferson Activity Center.
There you go.
Is that the official name?
Yes.
Yes.
It's nicknamed the TJ.
Well.
Not T-dash-Jack.
I'm uncomfortable voting on this because I think we've raised enough questions. And since we've already hired somebody to take care of that one issue, I, I'd recommend we put this back to the next meeting and give our administrators and people time to deal with some of our concerns. I don't know.
I don't know. I, it's certainly, you know, room to, to delve into and something we need to look into. I just don't know that this is a step we need to do tonight. You know, I'd like to hear from, you know, the city. I'd like to hear from, you know, the students. You know, do the students feel safe in their school? I know that we do have problems, but, you know, maybe the door monitor will work and we can, you know, hold off on this for a little while till we can figure something out.
I'm not sure I feel comfortable if they're finding people sleeping in the restroom. But, um, you know, if we hold off, what does that do for a timeline on construction if we?
Probably looking at least.
Eventually decided to.
Well, instead of being spring, it'd be summer. Ideally, right now, if you're going to have a, a monitor standing at the door to eliminate the people walking into the restroom, that would help.
You know, and, you know, there are other concerns, like if you're looking at the final document, uh, design documents, I read the scope of services. The services do not include relocating or extensive work done to the existing sixty-six inch diameter storm sewer. So we may have to do something with that and how much is that going to cost us? If you're looking to expand it on a larger footprint, you know, we may not be looking at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We may be looking at, you know, at another five hundred. I don't, I don't know how much sewer costs.
Well, right now, you have a.
Couldn't find that out today.
You have a water retention pond right there, is I believe? Or water clucks right there beside it? I mean, maybe it's not intentional.
I don't think it's a pond.
But, but water clucks there, you know?
Yeah.
So could you have other issues? I suppose maybe that's why the cost is higher for the surveying site work plan and all that.
No, the, it doesn't include that. The civil, includes civil engineering site for parking, grading, utilities, driving, drives, and drainage. But does not include what the sewer system is going to look like when you get there. So maybe we need to look into how old that sewer system is. Or is that something that would be replaced when they do Broadway? Are they going to go that far? Is that anything going to affect that? So I think those are some of the other answers. Need to figure out too.
Okay.
Does somebody wish to make a motion to table this until our meeting next month?
You have to vote on the original motion.
Not to.
Just vote it down.
Yeah.
Vote it down.
Well, from a historical standpoint, I know that, um, for at least the thirteen years that I've been on the board, we've been, uh, concerned about it. We've always pushed the connector back because we did not own the property. The railroad ran through. Uh, we were looking at millions of dollars of, of constructing, constructing elevators on both sides of the connector. And, and so it's, from, from that standpoint, it, it's, it's an issue that's been a concern of, of many folks. It's just that it's been so cost prohibitive in the past because of what the construction costs are going to be. Now that we own the land, uh, and, and we don't have to build an elevated connector, we can build it on the ground. I mean, this, I, I will vote in, in favor of this, um, proposal or this, this, um, resolution because it is a concern, uh, for our students. It, it's, it is a safety concern. I mean, we, we say that, okay, it's going to cost five hundred thousand dollars. Well, you know, let, let's put value on our children's lives. I mean, do we want to wait until there is an accident and, 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 and say, well, geez, we could have possibly avoided this situation and, and that money that we used to, to build this secure vestibule for the connector between these two buildings? We would say that, yes, that's a very good, uh, expense that, that we, um, that we as a board decided to do. This is beginning the process of what a connector can look like for this building. And until we know what our architects and engineers, um, gather from the information that, that they collect from the administrators at TJ, uh, from our staff here at the, at the, um, Educational Service Center, and with our facilities and maintenance people, we don't know what it's going to look like. But I want to have the opportunity to know what it's going to look like. And yes, fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money for an architect and an engineer to develop a, a set of plans so that, that we can, uh, vision what it will look like. Yes, it is very expensive, but it's the starting process. From my standpoint, we need a starting point. We've needed a starting point for decades since the TJ, before, since before it was called TJ. I mean, before it was just, just that building over there across the railroad tracks. So for me, um, it, it, um, it's been a long time coming. That, that, um, that final piece of the puzzle to make our school, uh, to make Thomas Jefferson a more secure school. So for me, it's, it's, it's a starting point. And then once we have the designs, once we've had those conversations with the architects and engineers and they've had those conversations, then we can sit down and say, yeah, is it worth it? Is it worth it?
Does the fifty thousand include the three options?
Seventy-three thousand.
Depends on what the. I threw that number out just because, I mean, I just threw that number out because it was an easy number to, to, to arrive at.
They're going to give us three designs or a price between thirty and seventy-three grand.
And that's going to cost us seventy-three thousand?
Between thirty and seventy-three grand, depending on the cost of the project.
So if we choose the lesser, we pay for the lesser.
So we're not paying them to come up with three plans?
We are.
We are.
They're coming up with three plans. If we pick the most expensive one, it'd be about seventy-three. If we picked the least expensive one, it'd be about thirty.
That makes no sense to me.
They're taking a gamble. That's the, that's.
Cause we could do a smaller project.
That's what the.
Pardon?
If we do a smaller project, then their, their overall expenses are going to be less.
They got to do all the planning ahead of time to give us three plans, don't they?
Engineers and architects.
I think all the bidding and the construction.
Their fees are tied.
Administration of the project too.
Yeah, their, their fee is tied to the cost of the project. So it, it's, whether we come up with three plans or four plans or five plans, the fee is going to be what we decide as a board. If we decide to choose our project at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, their fee is going to be.
Thirty grand.
Thirty-five thousand dollars, whether, and, but they still have to do all of that work for the three project or the three sets of plans that, that we get to choose from.
He's so balanced, they're paying six, seven percent. Gosh, you're about two to three percent more to get options. I mean, I'm guessing. I do like, I do like one thing. It's like, I think Dave's got a point there, um, about that corridor between those two. During icy weather, during other times, kids are running across there. You know, but you just, you have opportunities to have accidents happen.
Fall on the ice, crack your head open.
Yep.
And also, we have a reason why we haven't done this before was that.
We didn't own the property.
We didn't own the property. We would have had to pay two million dollars to put in the elevator on both sides to be compliant with Americans' Distabilities. And so now, because we can build it on the ground, we can actually make the building secure. Not that there's a major issue with worrying about security, but it is much better to spend five hundred thousand dollars now before we get an issue than to actually get a, get a real issue and not just a slight scare. And I think.
The pricing that we have here, you know, three hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think that is a fair price to pay to help ensure the safety of our students.
So I'm assuming that since we've had considerable discussion on this and raised some concerns, that the architects will take that into consideration in drawing up some of these plans? Well, some of the things I mentioned about how's this going to work when you got it, who's going to be monitoring when you got it connected?
Yes.
When you talk about the SRO and all that, but what I'm saying is some of the things that our board members have raised tonight, the architects ought to hear, so when they draw up that stuff.
We will definitely, Bill, we have, we want to be as transparent as possible. We will communicate your concerns. But as Dave said, this is just a starting point. You can later decide we don't want to do it.
But we need that.
Well, that changes my thinking a lot. Thank you, David.
I guess my main concern was just on the, the cost, looking at the three bids. I was like, this doesn't make sense. Um, I like the fact that we've paid less. I do think it's a little over market, but maybe that's because we're getting options and they're going to do more with us. To meet our needs. But I'm curious if we, if we go through, get three options, don't choose any, what that expense is.
That's the gamble, that's the gamble that the architects and engineers take. I mean, that, I mean, if they don't get the job, all of that work that they've done, um, that's, that's the risk that they take. And so, you know, is, is it a fair way to compensate? Well, evidently, the American Institutes of Architects have deemed that, yes, this is a, um, this is a comparable way to compensate, you know, this is a fair way to compensate, uh, the professional services that, that architects and engineers provide.
So do I understand that if they come up with these three plans and we don't like any of them, they don't get a penny? Is that the way it's worded?
I can't answer that question.
I can't answer that either, but I mean, typically when, if, when we have architects, we, when, when we had architects come before us to, to give us their vision of what our stadium remodel would look like, those three other architects and engineering firms that didn't get the job, we didn't pay them anything. We didn't pay them a penny. So I don't know what the, I mean, I don't, I mean, so it's, it's, that's a gamble. That's, that's part of the game.
Yeah. How do we put this to?
Call the question.
To vote.
Mr. Kazire.
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
No.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes, and the motion's carried. And now we have approval of our consent agenda, which includes, uh, School Resource Officer Program Agreement with the Council's Police Department, approval of agreement with Iowa School for the Deaf for Sign Language Interpreting Services, approval of memorandum of understanding between Children's Square USA and Council's Community School District, annual appointment of district complaint.
of district complaint officers, investigators, approval of the professional growth systems books, which you all have, and approval of a memorandum of understanding with Underwood Community School District for student placement at Canesville for the year, and then personal action, claims, and accounts, is there a motion?
I move approval of our consent agenda.
Thanks, sir, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am, any discussion?
It's not really discussion, but I really like the approval of memorandum of understanding with Underwood.
Find that interesting? Yes. You know, here at the school district, we serve all the children, even from the area around us, and that is what makes us...
I like that we have something available to others that can, they can come and utilize our facilities.
You bet. Dean, go ahead.
Mr. Kazire.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes, and the motion is carried, and we are adjourned.